How you doing? Thank you. You too, you too. How's it going?
It's going well.
Good, 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 good. So changes are happening, you can sense it? Good. Good, alright. I don't see them on the list. That's what I was looking for. No, no, no. Is this the list? Nothing on here. Nothing on the list? Oh, okay. Okay. Well, I'll talk about it.
We'll see what happens. Okay, I made it.
What's that?
Cansado.
Cansado.
Trabajando mucho.
Está trabajando mucho.
Sí. Yo quiero dormir.
It may still be in her game.
Sí. For two days.
A lo menos.
A lo menos.
Board of Education meeting is hereby called to order. We have a forum, so we will get started. Ladies and gentlemen in the audience, if you can take your seats in any conversations that you're having, if you can take them outside, if you have a cellphone, please put it on vibrate.
Unless you're up here.
Unless you're up here and you can, you know, talk on your phone. If you're up here, you may want to turn it off. We will start our meeting with a act of reverence and pledge allegiance to the flag led by our student rep, Mr. Los.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board members should have received minutes from three meetings in your board packets on Friday, January 22nd, February 9th, and February 18th. I'll start with acceptance of the minutes from January 22nd. I'll entertain a motion to approve minutes from January 22nd. Moved by Commissioner Elliott, is there a second? Seconded by Vice President White. All those in favor of the January 22nd minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The minutes are accepted. We will now move to acceptance of the February 9th special meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution, I mean not resolutions, minutes from February 9th.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Elliott, is there a second? Seconded by Vice President White. Student rep advisory vote?
Aye.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Those minutes are accepted. We also have very, very brief minutes from the public hearing on the University Preparatory Charter School for Young Men. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Moved by Commissioner Elliott, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice President White. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. And then also part of that February 18th docket, there's minutes from the special meeting of February 18th, which followed the public hearing, I'll entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Elliott, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice President White. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We had tons of student recognition this evening, so we won't be having any on the agenda further. And I want to thank all those students that did excellent performances this evening, 58 School and the Urban Steel Band. We have some speakers addressing an agenda item. I will call your name. When you come up to the podium, you will have two minutes to speak. Please don't place me in a position of having to interrupt your words and ask you to take your seat after the two minutes are up. I'll explain to you, these are speakers addressing an agenda item. Whenever we have students, regardless of what they have to say, we always put our students at the top of the agenda. I'm going to call the first three speakers. Please approach the podium, say your name, what school you go to, and you'll be timed after you are done doing that. So we'll start with Kelvin Roberts, Barry Johnson, and Reality Gray. Mr. Roberts.
Hello, thank you all. My honor to be here. Kelvin Roberts, I'm a student at East High School. I am a junior.
Speaking to the mic, Mr. Roberts.
Sorry. I have been attending East High School since 7th grade. During this time, I have been attended, I have participated in student government and I am also a member of the Teaching and Learning Institute, our magnet program for future educators. I am an aspiring elementary teacher. When our school switched principals a year and a half ago, many of East's positive things, especially our reputation, were lost in the transition. But at the same time, the school has also made some changes for the better, including having more communication between parents and teachers. I would like to see our school be restored to a level of excellence. We need to see drastic changes done to the school, from community building to better funding, to a more relevant curriculum. I feel strongly that students must give input into how these, how the district spends our money. Students should also have a legitimate decision-making power in policies and rules of the district. Most importantly, students need better preparation for serious careers like law, medicine, and engineering. If a student does not have a say in what they do, they feel like no one cares about their voice. Then they become rebellious because they feel the treatment they are receiving is incorrect and unjust. In our TLI education seminar at East, we created our own set of rules and we all came to agreement. We have one simple rule, respect. Respect yourself, respect others, respect the environment. The district must learn to respect students by sharing the power to make decisions for the district. Without the students' power in decision-making, they feel like they do not own the policies and changes made for the district will not have student support. Therefore, there will be less chance of success and less chance for the students to respect the rules and policies that are being enforced. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Barry Johnson.
Hi, my name is Barry C. Johnson. I'm a student at Charlotte High School. And for the past couple of years, well, since I started Charlotte High School, I was thinking that, well, how come we don't have a football team there? And every time I asked up, they gave me the same answer because the school and the committee don't have, doesn't have enough money for it. But I was thinking that if we have enough players willing, well, enough students willing to play, maybe that the attendance rate will go up and that the GPA pointers will increase by a major amount. Mainly, the reason why I'm asking for is because when I was going to Marshall to try to play football, they never gave me a chance to play at all. And, well, last year, my brother Barry Johnson and his best friend Dwayne Porche, they haven't got a chance to play that whole season. So I was thinking that if we have one for our school, maybe it'll get the kids that go to our school off the streets and into classrooms so they could work more, work harder, so they have something to look forward to. Right now, they're all thinking that, that all they gotta do is just stay in the streets and hope that everything get better. But they need to learn that that's not the answer for it. But the answer is staying in class, doing your work, and you'll achieve a lot more. And I have signed petitions here of all the students, well, most of the students in Charlotte High School that are willing to play if we have one, if we have a football team at our school. And I know for a fact that their parents will be backing us up and hopefully the, well, the neighborhood will be able to back us up on that same level. And that's it. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And I would also ask that you email the board. Commissioner Elliott is your liaison to Charlotte. If you want to reach out to her and the superintendent, Commissioner Elliott is up here, they can help, they can further assist you. Reality Gray and Daniel Sutton, is Reality here? I love that name.
Oh, they were supposed to come with me, but they have something else to do today.
Okay. So again, again, Mr. Johnson, this follow-up with the board, with your board member and superintendent, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Forgive me if I say your name wrong. Crescendo Scipione? How do you say it?
Crescendo Scipione?
Crescendo Scipione, okay.
Hi, my name is Crescendo Scipione. I'm a senior at School of the Arts and a member of Rochester Students for a Democratic Society. I wanted to make two points. My first one is about the superintendent's proposal to reverse the district's policy on releasing student directory information to military recruiters. I would first like to point out that the current policy has been in place since 2005 and for three years, the district has been non-compliant with No Child Left Behind. For three years, nothing has happened as a result of this. Federal funding has not been cut, nothing has changed. So it would seem like common sense to simply leave well enough alone and move on to more important issues, of which there are plenty. Superintendent, I'm not so sure about New York City, but in Rochester, we have a rich legacy of moral courage in the face of unjust laws. Maybe you should comply with that. In 1850, Congress passed the Fugitive Slave Act. This law required the return of escaped slaves to their masters. The city chose to defy that law by making Rochester one of the most important stops on the Underground Railroad. They broke the law. They were non-compliant with the law because it was wrong. And today, we build monuments to those people. We named schools after them. To overturn the current recruitment information policy would betray the legacy of Frederick Douglass in this city by exposing students to unyielding harassment by recruiters who target poor students and students of color because they see them as vulnerable, hopeless, and easy to manipulate and deceive. I think what the superintendent and this board may be forgetting is that your first and foremost responsibility is not to a marine recruiter, it is to the students of this As one of those students, I oppose any policy that gives a racist, homophobic, and predatory institution like the military greater access to my school. I hope that this board chooses integrity over cowardice.
Thank you, Mr. Scipione.
I'm not done.
You, your, your time's up. Thank you. Aaron Shoemaker, is Aaron here? Aaron Shoemaker? Jacob Spezio, is Mr. Spezio here?
Hello, my name's Jacob Spezio. I'm a senior this year at School at Walz and a member of Rochester Students for a Democratic Society. I think I can safely say that I represent the majority of School at Walz students and parents who are opposed to reversing the current procedure that safeguards students' privacy and withholds their personal information from lying coercive military recruiters. Furthermore, I would like to express my frustration and disgust toward the board members who seem to have forgotten that they represent the students. That's me and my peers and not recruiters or the war machine. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Lynn, Christopher Lynn, Mr. Lynn here? And Mr. Lynn will be followed by Mary Adams.
The Rochester Parent Union is a family advocacy organization designed to act as an accessible resource to city-school-district families, listen and respond to the needs and views of the city-school-district families, and work collaboratively with the RTA and the RCSD administration. The Rochester Parent Union is disheartened and disappointed by recent events and conversation involving the proposed closing of School 14. First, the families of School 14 need more information regarding the closing of the school. At the January informational meeting, the central office asked attendees to write down questions which would be answered in due course. To date, families at School 14 do not have answers to the pressing questions regarding the displacement of their children. Tonight, you intend to vote on the proposition to close School 14 without first answering parent and family questions regarding what that will mean for displacing our students, continuation of special education and language services, as well as questions about keeping sibling groups intact. Second, the current plan to close School 14 calls to eliminate the UPK program and not replace it with another UPK classroom in a public school. The Rochester Parent Union insists that another UPK classroom open in a public school to replace the one that will be lost at School 14. The Rochester Parent Union believes that putting more UPK programs in public schools will help enrich our community through early education and intervention and early contact with district families. Third, on February 12th, the Board of Education Excellence in Student Achievement Committee meant to hear the proposal from Superintendent Bredard and his team regarding the closing of School 14 and the opening of a new expeditionary learning school on St. Paul Street. A vast majority of School 14 families were not invited to the committee meeting. At the committee meeting, Commissioner Van White and his committee asked if the superintendent and his team had heard any concerns from parents of School 14 children. The superintendent and his team answered no to that question. At the informational meeting, a group of parents talked directly with school innovator Mary Doyle and told her that they had concerns about the plan to close School 14. There appears to be a grave breakdown in communication between the district administrators and the families of School 14. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mary Adams, is Ms. Adams here?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ms. Adams will be followed by Ricardo Adams.
Hi, I'm a parent of a city-school, high school student, and I'm coming to speak in opposition to the proposed change to the military data access policy. According to this morning's newspaper, military recruiters did not seem to be challenging the existing district's current handling of student information, contrary to the claims that were brought up last week. So hopefully, all the people signed up to speak tonight, it's sort of a much-to-do-about-nothing. I'm hoping that the existing policy will actually be maintained if there really isn't a problem from the military's perspective. I want to talk from personal experience about serious problems that I see with the proposed changes. First, there will definitely be families who do not have their wishes honored in terms of protecting their kids' privacy. When we moved in 2007, it took the district almost a year of calls, emails, and notes to accomplish and address change with the district. I also know that even when forms are sent in, sometimes the school mixes things up. And of course, very few of us are completely infallible in terms of getting our own paperwork in, kids and parents. Second, military recruiters themselves are under tremendous pressure to increase their numbers and they themselves are pressed to use psychological manipulation, deceitful promises, and non-stop pursuit of potential recruits. And I feel for them. I mean, there's been some recent press about the pressure that recruiters are under and a number of suicides among one recruiting station in Texas. So, you know, I, it's a systemic problem and the thing is, I don't want my kid to suffer from that pressure. Our children deserve to be free from pressure from adults who are working under pressure to recruit them based on the adults' own guidelines, pressures, and self-interest. One of the other things we need to keep in mind is that our teenagers aren't always even keeled with their ability to handle pressure. They might not be able to say no, even though they want to say no. And it's our responsibility as parents to make the decisions as to who they come in contact with, especially regarding something as serious as military recruitment.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Ricardo Adams. I have a, I'm a parent of a student in the city-school district and I have two up-and-coming kids that'll be going to the city-school district. And I just oppose that, reversing that decision. My kids are, get exposed to too much stuff as it is. I really don't need for them to be exposed to nothing else that I don't want them to be exposed to. I don't know how you may feel about the military, but I've been reading about they have record numbers of suicides and all of that. I don't want my kids to even have to, the odds is against my kids. And I just don't need them to be exposed. And I'm here to express that I wish you don't reverse a decision. That's what I'm here for.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. David Dornford? David Dornford? And David Dornford will be followed by Mr. Doug Noble.
Hello, I'm here as a veteran, a veteran of the Vietnam War, a member of the Veterans for Peace and Military Families Speak Out. My issue, whereas it has the implication of coercion through Congress in this act to have this stipulation in the No Child Left Behind Act at all, is unimaginable, is coercive. I think for this board to comply with this should be complicit in coercion. It's simply that, I think we should listen to the students. Carefully listen to these students. You serve them. You are supposed to serve them, listen to them. Their information should be their discretion, their parents' discretion. And my issue is with this board. You are trying to undo the policy you have, which is a policy that was agreed to and trust. The state is not doing its job in informing us when recruiters come to schools as agreed. You're not doing your job that you've agreed to. Now you are ready to become complicit in a coercive policy. I strongly recommend against that for the sake of all these beautiful young children, including my son, who was wrongfully recruited. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Noble? Doug Noble will be followed by Theodore Wilcox.
I'm Doug Noble. I want to share some background on the military recruitment language many of us are here to discuss, which was slipped into the federal education law in 2001 through the Vitter Sessions Amendment. One sponsor was David Vitter. Our conservative senator from Louisiana later scandalized for frequenting DC Madam Call Girls. The other sponsor, Pete Sessions of Texas, was later identified as one of the 20 most corrupt members of Congress for his role in the Abomoff bribe scandals and his links to defense contractors. These are the architects of the law with which we are struggling so hard to comply. What of the law itself? Legal scholars have determined this section of the law to be unconstitutional for coercing students or parents to expose themselves publicly in unpopular opposition to high school military recruitment. A recent ACLU report has found that the section violates UN Convention on the Rights of the Child, a treaty ratified by the US Senate which protects against recruitment of child soldiers. Our own Louise Slaughter has co-sponsored a bill in Congress that will require parents' written consent for any disclosure of student information to recruiters, thereby changing the NCLB. All this provides a context for our immediate concerns tonight, which are two. One, the district has been in noncompliance with the NCLB both by failing to send out parent consent forms and by sending incomplete information to recruiters. Two, the district is also in noncompliance with its board policy first by failing to send parent consent letters with student emergency cards, and second by hurrying a consent letter to parents this January that reverses the board's policy. What to do? Monitoring noncompliance with this section of NCLB requires a lengthy, multi-step procedure at the highest levels of military and government before any funding losses, and I have found no instance anywhere of federal funding loss through this process, so there is little to fear. More serious to me is the district's noncompliance with its own board policy through a belated effort to rectify its own mistakes. The board policy on military recruitment was written carefully after substantial deliberation and courageously and defensively interpreted law. Any district effort to change its board policy must be done with an equivalent amount of informed deliberation. I must tell you that if you insist on a small-minded, knee-jerk compliance, prepare yourselves for a determined disruptive defiance. Thank you.
Theodore, Theodore Wilcox. Mr. Wilcox will be followed by Roger Griswold.
Hello, my name is Ted Wilcox and my wife and I and our two little children arrived in Rochester about 42 years ago. Our two daughters graduated from East High School. We have two granddaughters here. One is just graduated from Sota and the other is still there. So we have, we're invested, vested, and we're thankful, actually, and want to say that to the district and the board for the good things that they've done for our family. However, I do have grave concerns concerning the recent debate on the district's privacy policy. It is common that, when we are faced with, it's common that we can be faced with a difficult decision which requires ignoring one law to obey another. A trivial example would be to, the need to run a red light in order to clear the way for a coming ambulance. As a civil rights, peace, anti-war activist, I think that the school board, I thank the school board for the decision in 2005 to place privacy ahead of the NCLB provisions. It is gratifying that no civil agency has threatened Rochester or Fairport for their, quotes, "breach" of the NCLB Act. Could it be that it is recognized that the NCLB Act contains unconstitutional provisions? However, I see two instances where severe criticism is warranted. First, in our governmental system, thank goodness, the military is not directly involved in the enforcement of law. In the paper this morning, the Marine who called the district seemed to claim that only to have wanted complete information on students who had opted in. That seems highly unlikely, as that would, or should, not have caused the reaction of the superintendent in January. Thus, I believe the earlier reports that he had appropriately threatened the district with retaliation are likely to be true. However, if he had a problem with the policy, it can be forwarded along the chain of command and brought to the attention of a civilian agency which can determine what, if anything, should be done.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox.
And I contacted Representative Slaughter and would suggest you two too.
Thank you. Roger Griswold, followed by Thomas Gregory. I'm sorry, Roger Griswold, followed by Gary Pudda.
I'm here as the president of the Veterans for Peace organization here in Chapter 23 in Rochester. And I am, and along with my fellow chapter members, we oppose the changing of the law. As a former military veteran, a veteran of Vietnam, I know the coercion that a lot of students and a lot of people have been under to fill these positions within the military. And I feel that the school board has enough responsibility to protect the students and not give up further information that could be used as a detrimental action towards their lives. Everybody that's been in the military realizes the fact that when you get into the military, there's only one purpose, and that's to defend their country and to kill somebody else. And that's not what the school is supposed to do, or not to provide that information to the students. I hope you do not reverse this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Pudda? Gary here? Gary will be followed by Thomas Gregory.
Good evening, Superintendent, President Evans, honorable members of the board. My name is Gary Pudda. I'm the chapter director of the Genesee Valley chapter of the New York Civil Liberties Union. I represent 2,000 members in the Rochester area. These are members of the union, their parents, their family members, their residents of Rochester. Our concern is with the privacy issues of this matter. That includes the right of a parent and their child to make an informed decision about whether they want their personal information turned over to the government. This is not a judgment on the choice a person makes, but a judgment on the degree and extent about how well that person has been advised about the ability to make that choice. The current policy of the Rochester City School District is held up as an example of a model policy that balances the legitimate needs of the nation to have a competent military against the privacy rights of the children in the care of the district. The policy is a good balance between facilitating contact between students contemplating a military service career military service career and those who wish to exercise, as Supreme Court Justice Louis Brandeis put it, "the most comprehensive of rights, the most valued by civilized man, the right to be left alone." Before we change a policy that works, that is balanced, that meets everyone's needs, that is respected as a model policy, let's take a moment, let cooler heads prevail, and think this out. In our letter to each of you and to the superintendent, we detail why the current policy is in fact complies with No Child Left Behind. We argue that the policy is not in violation, is not altogether clear. No Child Left Behind is entirely silent on what type of procedure must be used to compile this list of information. Congress has left it to the school to decide how they want to compile requested directory information. The law does not specify whether schools are to presume that parents want the information released at all. All that is required is that they do not deny such a request. Let us not, let us not be anxious to fix something that is not broken. On behalf of the membership, I ask the board and superintendent to please keep the policy as it is, and implement it as it is. Thank you. Good night.
Thomas Gregory? Mr. Gregory will be followed by Robin Murray.
My name is Thomas Gregory. I'm here as a citizen, representing myself. I'm not here in any official capacity. I'm a former service Marine, and I work as a volunteer training older men who are returning into service. I basically, they stick them with the old man, and I try to run them into shape. I'm a graduate of Cornell University. Right there, what I'm giving you there, with permission, is an invitation. It's a Marine Corps Educator's Guide with an invitation for any member of the board or any assigning that would like to go down to the Educators Workshop, held in Paris Island for four days in April. And so you can say something a little bit more about what the Marine Corps and about what our military service is all about. I've been with the Command as a volunteer since my son enlisted in the United States Army. That was about three, three and a half years ago now. We were in the process of losing our child to the streets. Familiar story, broken home, the whole works, son out there riding bicycles. All of a sudden, a major, oh, Major Curtis, Major Curtis Harper. I had a conversation with him. I was able to get our son in the United States Military. My son's being educated. My son has health care. My son has a job. My son has training, and he has a future should he decide not to go 20 years and come out for employment, because he has habits that will benefit him as a civilian. I know the recruiters. I work with them almost every day. I stop by and say hello. I have people who I'm assigned to take, to basically train from time to time. Their concern for the students and for the people who they want to bring into this environment is one directed toward education as well as training, health care, all the benefits that I think any responsible parent in this room would want to see their child have. It's not a numbers game, as I've heard, and we're not creating killers. What we are, we're creating citizens for tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Thank you. Robin Murray? Robin Murray, and Robin will be, Robin Murray will be followed by Brian Kessler.
Hello, everyone. My name is Robin Murray. I'm a former sergeant in the United States Army, and I'm in opposition to you changing the policy about recruitment in your schools. I'm here with a fact. Joint Advertising and Marketing Research Committee, our study, I don't know if you ever heard of it. It's a program envisioned and executed by the military. It is essentially an advertising machine. It is officially a division of the Pentagon, which was created in 2000 in effort to boost recruitment numbers. In June 2005, the Pentagon issued a privacy notice to say it had bought the right to the following information from all high school and college students: social security numbers, age, email, home address, telephone numbers, school year, grade point average, ethnicity, ASVAB results, and subject studies. This data is kept separate from the information collected by the military under the No Child Left Behind Act. This means that the military is collecting extremely sensitive information, not once, but twice. Some 12 million students and 20 million young adults ages 18 to 37 have profiles that are officially military property and can be accessed by the military at any time. Military recruiters work on quota, just like some other salesmen. They work long hours and face little promotion opportunities. Often, the way for them to achieve a higher rank is meritorious advancement. Quota also determines their and your young son or daughter's job. When certain standards are not met, soldiers face punishment and threaten to ruin their careers or separate time from their loved ones, which in turn motivates them to recruit more people. Now, about truth in recruitment in the army that I joined. 28% of all women report being raped while in the service. 5.6% of people who enter the GI Menominee Bill use all the money available to them. 75% of African Americans and 67% of Latinos report experiencing racial prejudice in the service.
Thank you. That's your time. Thank you. Brian? Brian Kessler, followed by another Brian, Brian Linzo.
Good evening, Rochester City School Board members. My name is Brian Kessler, and in preparing for tonight, I read about this board's debate around the opt-out, opt-in policy. I've heard board members compare the military service with other professions, and I have something to say about that. As a Marine veteran of Iraq and Afghanistan, serving three combat tours, I would like to point out differences we all must acknowledge. You don't sign up at 17 to become a police officer. You don't sign an eight-year contract to work at OfficeMax. And most importantly, schools don't give away our children's private information without their explicit permission. For those who still defend the military as a good career right now, let's look at some opportunities your students might have. Last year, 128 Army soldiers committed suicide, but over 2,100 soldiers attempted it. Last month alone, the Army had 24 suicides. That's more than combat-related deaths in Iraq and Afghanistan combined. This month, the Pentagon just announced that 13,000 stop-loss soldiers will have to wait five months to receive their stop-loss bonuses. One in three female service members report cases of military sexual trauma, and in 2007, this meant 2,688 reported cases. This issue is not about being for or against our military. It's about providing Rochester's next generation with a choice, a choice free of predatory recruiting tactics, free from an invasive opt-out policy, and instead filled with hope and opportunity. The greatest and most powerful gift our children have is their futures. Don't give it up to these recruiters without a fight.
Thank you. Brian Linzo will be followed by Ken Brayley.
Hi, my name is Brian. I'm also a member of the Rochester community, and I hope someday to actually send my children to the city schools. I'm also here to speak against a change in, the proposed change in the policy. It seems unnecessary, given the information people have brought on. If there is a direct threat to the school's funding, I say present it, so we may see it in the day of light. So far, all we've heard is pressure from a branch that doesn't actually in charge of administering and executing the laws, merely executing our foreign policy. And I think we need to see that evidence, if it exists. And I think also, and the timing of it seems quite cynical, in a time where our economy is going into the tank and corporations are leaving, we're inviting the military in the front door and saying, "This is your job opportunity." I don't think it's right to give, the only opportunities to our students is a military career. I think we need to do a lot more, and it's maybe beyond the purview of this board, to offer them more opportunities. But I think the change in this policy, the timing of it, seems quite cynical. This is a time of hope and a time of crisis, and I think we need to act in accordance with what students need, their options. It seems completely unnecessary to offer up their information without their consent. There's no lack of opportunities to join the military. There's a recruiter station almost a block from here, commercials all over. There's no lack of opportunity. What we want is privacy and the rights of parents who haven't responded to actually have their wishes honored and be contacted until their wishes are honored, not just given up automatically to the military. I think we owe this to our students, and I think this board ought to stand up for the rights of its students and not the intentions of the military. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Brayley? Ken Brayley will be followed by Julia Fairchild.
Hi, my name's Ken Brayley. I'm also a veteran of the US Army. I would like to start off by thanking the board for their previous position of opt-in that has been for the last few years and the urge that no changes be made. I wish that my high school had a similar policy about giving my private contact information to anyone. I'm not here to argue that nobody should join the military. It can be a good opportunity for many people. However, I would like to offer my experience as to how it is not often the best choice. In my senior year of high school, I had received a $42,000 academic scholarship offer from Clarkson University. I had no intention or interest at all in military service. I was 17 years old when I was called at home by an Army recruiter. I agreed to meet with him, and he did his job well. He convinced a young, impressionable person that his interests were aligned with my best interests. I will not go into the details of how I was convinced, but I will say that I was lied to. Even if the recruiter had been completely truthful, I had no idea what I was getting into. At 17 years old, I had signed away the next eight years of my life. It was less than a year into my service when I realized that I did not want to be in the military. Unfortunately, the military is not a career like many others that we've compared them to. You can't just quit. At this time, I called my younger brother, who is also in the delayed entry program at 17. I told him about my experiences so far with the military, and he decided that he no longer wanted to enlist. He told his recruiter of his decision, and the recruiter told him that he would face jail time if he did not go. Some may know that this is a lie, but unfortunately, my brother did not and continued with his enlistment paperwork to avoid prosecution. Unfortunately, my experience and my brother's experience are very common. The military recruiter's job is not to help a student figure out what is best for them. Their job is to reach their recruitment goals. If the school board decides to keep the opt-in policy, students will still have the option to join the military. Nobody wants to deny them of their choice, but the opt-out policy would result in more stupid...
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brayley. Julia Fairchild? Is Julia Fairchild here? Okay. One last speaker, Patricia Schmidt. Is she here? Patricia Schmidt here? Okay. You will be our last speaker.
I didn't really come prepared with a speech. I'd been here before and spoke for the military. I am a mother of four children in the military, and they're in their 20s and 30s. Some have decided to make careers. None of my children went into war zones, and you really don't, you really can't determine that when they're going in. I have never had a bad experience with a recruiter. I was there through most of it, as every parent should be. So when kids, young kids, are standing up here, going into anti-war websites and anti-military websites and quoting you statistics that aren't true...
Out of order. Out of order. Out of order, do not interrupt in this meeting, please.
I urge everyone to go on the, you know, true websites with facts, go into a recruiter, talk to them. My children not only serve in the military, but they help in the community. They've helped with Katrina. My daughter's a nurse. She is in San Antonio, Texas, where the military serves a third of that area. Traumas that can only be flown in or brought in by ambulance. Four children, no crisis, three girls, never been raped, you know? You can, high suicide rates, there's high suicide rates with teenagers, with financial You can't judge the military if you don't exactly know what you're talking about. And you're, if you're not going along with federal law, what message are you sending to your children that you don't have to follow the law? Rather, it's a school board law or a federal law, follow the law. Try to change the law. Those people in the background, I commend them. We're here because they're not only recruiters in the military, they're enlisted men, so we can stand up here and talk about this.
Thank you.
But, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. That concludes our speakers. We will now move to item number five on the agenda, which is the superintendent's report.
Okay, commissioners, I want to ask you that you go to the front. But before you do, for our presentation on our special ed report, I want to first congratulate the parents who were elected, parents and community members who were elected to the parent slash community council, and that'll be recognized at a future meeting. So thank you again for participating in that. If I can ask commissioners to go to the front, we have a presentation on the special ed While we, while we are setting up, if you can hear me or not, last year, when I walked into the district, we talked about doing a number of different audits. One was to look at the state of special education in our district. We knew that without tackling that, that issue, we would never raise achievement to the levels that we want to raise it to. Given the number of our special needs students who are being suspended, clearly, that's the highest number in our district, being cited by the state in a number of different areas for suspension for special ed students. When you look at the graduation rate and the achievement of students with disabilities in our district, we knew this was something we had to take on. So we asked the council of the great city schools to come in and audit and tell us what to do in moving this agenda forward. So the individuals who came here are experts in the field, with a combined over 140 years of experience in special education. And by the way, this was done at no cost to the district, $0. It was paid for by the council and by the board foundation. With that, I'll turn this over to Kristen Barkley, who was the liaison and the person who should have helped us put this together.
Good evening. As you know, the Council of Great City Schools recently released its report entitled "Improving Special Education in the Rochester City Schools." There are over 6,500 students with disabilities in Rochester, and they have the lowest graduation and the highest dropout rate of any subgroup. At the request of the superintendent, the council conducted a comprehensive program review at no cost to the district. The council's strategic team was made up of senior special education managers from large urban school districts throughout the country. Our work with the council began in late August. We provided the team with hundreds of documents and data sets. In mid-September, the team spent four days in Rochester, interviewing the superintendent, his staff, special and general educators, parents, advocates, administrators, and Commissioner The team spent an afternoon then debriefing us about some of its preliminary findings, and that provided a framework for us to begin some of our work. The council's report includes over 80 key findings, and it gives the district 35 major recommendations for special education reform. Some of the team's findings were positive. For example, it found that most district staff are committed to including students with disabilities in the general education setting. Staff also recognized the need to improve instruction for these children. It credited the development of the Leadership Academy, designed to improve leadership skills and capacity of current and future principals. And it found that the new Rochester curriculum, which focuses not on compliance but on accelerating student achievement, with laying a foundation for good first teaching and building accountability. The team also pointed to the district's integrated special class model as a great pro- The team also pointed to the district's integrated special class model as a great program for increasing inclusiveness. Integrated special classes increase the amount of time that many of our special education students spend in general education classes with their non-disabled peers. It felt that the Great Beginnings Program is an excellent model for accelerating literacy and improving vocabulary among kindergarten, first, and second graders in the district. And it pointed out that parents of students with disabilities want very much to work with the district as partners and not adversaries in the CSE process. Of the council's 80 findings, 46 of them were in areas of concern. The report's 35 recommendations comprehensively addressed each of the areas of concern and are broken down into these five categories. You'll see throughout the recommendations that areas of work that we have already started are marked with an asterisk. The first group of recommendations focus on reorganizing Central Office's Special Education Department. The team felt that special education needed strong leadership and that leadership should have a voice in policy-level decisions. Our new executive director, Linda Blankenhorn, joined Teaching and Learning in December and her background working for the New York State Department of Education in special education makes her an outstanding choice to head that department. Now, the overall goal of the reorganization is to have program and compliance expertise that supports schools. There will be three zone directors that focus on instruction and compliance within each school in their zone. These directors will report to Ms. Blankenhorn and will report indirectly to the school chiefs. Another step in the decentralization will be to hold all CSE meetings at schools. As you know, many CSE meetings are held downtown, which means that the staff who regularly work with the students do not fully participate in the CSE process. In coming years, all CSE meetings will be at buildings and they will be led by staff who know the children and their families best. The second category of the report's findings and recommendations, leadership and accountability, policy, procedures, and data. The team felt that the principals' evaluations should include targets that are specific to special education. For example, targets for graduation and suspension rates should be incorporated into their evaluations. It found the district lacking in written procedures to govern the delivery of special education services and it recommended developing procedures that clearly delineate who's responsible for delivering each service. The team also expressed significant concern over the lack of readily-available data and the use of data to drive informed decision-making. We're beginning to assess our special education software, IEP Direct, to determine the extent to which it will be able to meet our needs as we go forward. Some of the most important work that we will do will be in the area of program development and instruction. The report repeatedly focuses on a lack of a comprehensive model for response to intervention, or RTI. A good RTI model provides screening for all students to identify those who are in need of intervention, a systemic framework for research-based interventions, progress monitoring, and performance indicators. Most importantly, RTI includes system-wide training to address academic and behavioral issues that are right now driving a significant increase in student referrals for special Immediately after the debriefing in September, the Division of Teaching and Learning made this initiative a priority. Marilyn Patterson's Grant Group is very close to adopting a research-based model for RTI and they're planning significant professional development for the summer. In addition, Ms. Grant's Group has started to transform the way its curriculum leaders think about the specific needs of students with disabilities in learning. Going forward, we also need to focus on providing differentiated instruction in general education classrooms. But our most critical task right now is to develop and implement programs that are research-based and that rely on specially-designed instruction to allow children to progress toward The council also found significant inequities in special education populations amongst the schools in the district. It recommended a phased-in strategic plan to ensure that all schools, including those with admissions criteria, have proportionate shares of students with disabilities. As part of that plan, we need to build systems that keep students in their home school or their school of choice even when their programs change. And finally, we're working on developing new programs for higher-needs children so that we can provide appropriate in-district placements to more students. Much of the work ahead will be in improving the capacity of administrators and teachers. The council found that general and special educators would welcome professional development. We're creating a PD plan so that we can improve accountability and successfully implement the new programs that we develop. We also need to recognize this area's expertise that's available to us, often at little or no cost to the district. We're beginning to partner with area colleges and community-based organizations that have the capacity to provide more effective professional development in some very specific areas such as autism. The council was struck by how willing our parents are to work with us, and I can tell you that this is not always the case in school districts. It was recommended that we focus on improving our communication with parents of students with disabilities. Also, parents and advocates expressed concern that we over-identify students based on race. The team found that overall, we do not have a disproportionate number of students receiving special education based on race or ethnicity. However, they noted that our data cannot tell us whether within special education, we have over-identified certain specific groups of programs. We're doing that analysis internally right now. So the council's report has helped us frame what it is we have to do, but the immediate question for us now is how do we do it? We've mapped out a strategic plan that will be rolled out in three phases. First, we must build a foundation to support our schools. Our central office team will be comprised of agile, highly-specialized staff who function as a team under strong leadership. Their mission will be to support schools and their success will be measured by student performance and not compliance. Their initial work will focus on building effective programs and instructional models and implementing those programs in schools. At the same time, we'll improve our principals' capacity to empower them to implement effective and sustainable changes in their buildings for students with disabilities. We'll then focus on building school capacity. We will provide significant professional development for general education teachers, special education teachers, and administrators in areas such as discipline and differentiated instruction. We need to commit to a district-wide adoption of positive behavioral supports that will reduce suspensions for all students, including those with disabilities. As we build capacity, we'll be better able to engage our parents in the CSE process and help them learn how to develop IEPs for their children. We will also redistribute special education programs amongst our schools, increase the types of services and programs we offer, and ensure that the programs are effectively accelerating student achievement. Once that foundation has been laid, we will be able to hold staff accountable for the achievement of students with disabilities. Once program models are built and implemented, student outcomes will be constantly monitored and the programs will be adjusted to meet the specific needs of those children. Special education programs will be aligned with the Rochester curriculum so that the achievement gap for this subgroup will close and we'll begin to see higher graduation and lower dropout rates. As you can see, the special education work plan is aligned with the superintendent's overall strategic framework for accelerating achievement for all students. In concluding its report, the council felt that the district could be one of the best urban school districts in the country and that special education programs could also be among the best. While implementation and results will take time, there is every reason to believe that those results can be forthcoming for our children. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Barkley. Is Ms. Blankenhorn in the audience? Can you stand up? She's our new executive director for special ed services.
Thank you for that presentation. Mr. Superintendent, are there any other items on your report?
No, this concludes my report.
Thank you. Briefly, members of the board, and I mean briefly, are there questions for the superintendent regarding the special education report that you just saw? I'll start on my left. Commissioner Elliott?
I want to thank the superintendent for getting this report done by the Council of Great City Schools. I know that this was an area that I was really disheartened about. I happened to sit in on a, I was asked by a parent to sit in on a, one of the hearings. And if you may recall, I think it was last year that I reported that I left that meeting being twisted because there were probably about 10 people and then there was a parent. And the facility that it was in, it was tight corners and it appeared, it seemingly was, not seemingly, it was, where the finger was getting pointed at this parent. And I left there and it was, it was tense. And I left there with the feeling that these people did not have a caring bone in their body when it came to the parents. And so I'm glad that, Mr. Superintendent, you are working on this issue. For me, it's particularly about black males being disproportionately put in special education, so I'd like to, you know, when the report comes, that we are not disproportionately putting our, particularly, black males in that program. I'd like to be able to see that. But the question that I have, is that system that I just talked about, is that going to be eliminated?
The answer is yes. The fact that we're going to be moving those kinds of meetings to the school level, you're going to have teachers and administrators who work with these students directly. Right now, too often, you have folks who are looking at files, looking at folders, and making decisions perhaps remotely. With this model, much of this will be happening at a school level with people who work with kids on a regular basis.
Who care for kids?
Without question.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think I saw Commissioner Williams's hand.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. And, Mr. Superintendent, going through the report, they talked about the new organization, the organization chart. So you have an executive director and the executive director will then have three zone chiefs. And each zone chief will then have a data clerk and administrator and a, I think, an analyst. A data clerk, administrator, and a data analyst. So it gives the impression you're going to have this sort of exponential growth in the size of the staff. But when I, when I look at the numbers itself in terms of the staff, the current staff in special ed, you know, I come up with something like almost 1400 or 1500. So that, that includes, I don't know how you, how you count it, includes the teachers, the paraprofessionals, the speech and language specialists, the psychologists, the social workers, the nurses, the occupational therapists, and the physical therapist. So now, how, how will this new organization change in terms of personnel, if any? I mean, will it get larger, smaller, or what?
Well, talking strictly, and Kristen, you can add to this if you'd like, talking strictly to the administrative level, the central level, we're not looking to increase the numbers at all. And in fact, the numbers essential, correct me if I'm wrong, Kristen, will remain exactly the same. And right now, we're negotiating with ASAR to make, to make that happen. Special ed, as you probably know, is the most heavily-staffed kind of program in this country. In some schools, we have as many as four adults to eight kids in some of our classrooms. When you look at the expense nationally, it is a very expensive model and one that doesn't always provide the kinds of academic achievement that we hope to have. But the fact is because we have a budget issue and because we have a need to right-size, we're not looking to increase numbers. You want to add, Kristen?
No, I would say that the other council, the council's findings also included information about how fragmented the responsibilities are within the current central office organizational structure. And so when we've drafted the reorganization structure, Commissioner, we've aligned those responsibilities so that we don't have people responsible for doing 100 different things. They can focus on their job and move forward with just that work.
In fact, there's a line in the report, if I remember correctly, that says that we've got so many people now, especially in the district, not just the central office, but in the district, it creates confusion. So it is our aim to not just streamline, but also to reduce where we can. But we have to do this with the cooperation of our bargaining units.
Okay. And then, one last question. In going through the report itself, there seems to be a heavy emphasis on just sort of structure in terms of the new organizational structure, the procedures, the policies, but very little in terms of either effectiveness or outcomes. So what are we looking at in terms of, what kind of metrics are we looking at that we're trying to achieve as a result of this new reorganization?
Well, I think that the basic premise of the reorganization of central office will be to build into those department members' evaluations, metrics that include student performance outcomes. Those are not part of what they're evaluated on right now and so there is no direct connection between student achievement and the work being done at central office.
If I may add to that, Commissioner, the fact is when you look at when, how most people are evaluated, very often you find leaders who don't understand special ed focus strictly on gen ed kids, intend to push off the special needs kids to either a teacher in charge or an assistant principal in charge. When we talk about achievement, it's, I think it's important that we hold everyone accountable for every single student. So if you saw in the report, in the presentation, we talked about performance measures. So putting targets for schools, not just to say that only the gen ed kids will be achieving a 75% graduation rate, but to push that all kids will be increasing based on where they are and look at the value add and push people to certain benchmarks. So we strive to make sure that we're going to hold leaders and everyone else who work with kids and working at central office accountable to student achievement, all students' achievement.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell?
If I could follow up on that point, how much does, to what extent does student performance outcomes explain the behavior over the years of moving students with disabilities out of their home schools and into dumping grounds?
I think that student performance, or excuse me, I think behavior is one factor in that, but I also think that we don't have a very flexible continuum of services. In other words, principals in their buildings do not have the flexibility to amend students' programs, to offer services that are available in those buildings that would allow the child to stay in that building. So for, I'll give you a concrete example. A student in a 1211 special class who is accelerating in math may not be able to graduate. A student in a 12-1-1 special class who is accelerating in math may not be able to go to general education or advanced placement math classes because of our rigid continuum.
And what are we going to change? In that exact example, what is going to change to make that work for that student?
Our continuum will be revamped, so that that principal can say, this child is... the CSC has recommended that this child is in a 12-1-1 program, but for math class, the child will be able to go and participate with non-disabled peers in advanced placement classes. They'll have the flexibility to do that within their own building.
And will that continue to be true if, for instance, that student with disabilities has disruptive behavior or the kinds of attributes that get them put into a 12-1-1 instead of an integrated classroom?
Well, coupled with this work, I think one of the slides noted that we are looking at adopting a district-wide positive behavioral support model. And once you build those models, and in our schools where we have those models, we see extraordinary low rates of referrals for discipline. We see lower rates of referrals for students for initial classification to the Committee on Special Education. And we also see general staff... better satisfaction amongst our staff in those buildings and their jobs.
And if I may add, one thing we need to be clear, and we talk about it so often in our cabinet meetings, is that PBS is not a special ed initiative. It is a school-wide, system-wide initiative for all students. The same way RTI responds to intervention is not a special ed initiative, it's one for all students. And special ed designation is the last, final intervention. For too many of our schools, special ed is the first intervention, and we need to change that radically. So, it's a change in culture, capacity, and this is why Ms. Barclay talked quite a bit about the capacity-building, professional development of our staff, and the stimulus package that just came through with IDEA's could provide the funds that we need to actually push this kind of work forward.
One follow-up, Commissioner Powell?
On a slightly different tack, as you know, a big focus of mine is getting students with disabilities the opportunities, say, in their home school or to stay in the school of their choice, wherever that's practical. And I saw some positive things in the report... in the PowerPoint about that, starting with putting the hearings in the schools and with the commitment, page six, the commitment to keep students with disabilities in their home school. Questions about what the countervailing forces are. How will that impact FTE ratio... the FTEs? Are we going to have to hire more people to make that happen? Or are we going to be able to do that with the people we have? And secondly, are there building capacity impacts? If... does that put more, say, 12-1-1 classrooms into a building that doesn't have the room to spread out and create another classroom of that nature?
With response to your fir... the first part of your question, I think we are not... I'll go back to the example I gave of the 12-1-1 student who could participate in an advanced placement math course. Many of our high schools have advanced placement math courses. That student would just go to that class. He wouldn't need additional staff to accompany him or to that class. With respect to the second part of your question, there's a lot of countervailing forces when we look at buildings that are maxed out in terms of physical space capacity. But at the end of the day, we have the exact same number of students. And so, we are... we move special education students around quite a bit. The purpose of the council's recommendation to have a phased-in plan to address that problem is so that students aren't general education or special education students, aren't moved in fourth grade out of their building, but perhaps are phased... we phase that plan in over a six-year period so that we see some equalization over an extended period of time.
That does... that response does argue in favor of operating our school buildings at an 80% capacity instead of... instead of allowing our highly-chosen schools to be loaded up at 100% capacity, because then you don't have the ability to respond to a child who's already been assigned there, has served their first K through three at that building, and then suddenly, he's got an IEP. There's no space to put this child. And so, kind of, as a district, violate our commitment to the parent that says the child can stay in that building until they reach the other end of the terminus grade level. Thank you.
Thank you. Any last comments or questions for the superintendent? I'll just say, thank you for the report. Look forward to seeing the outcomes. I know special education is a very expensive enterprise in this district, and it's important that we do it correctly. So, thank you for the report and the hard work of your staff.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to board committee standing reports.
Excuse me, President Evans?
Yes.
I had a brief question about the superintendent's report.
Oh, yes, Commissioner Brennan?
Just about an omission and just a little clarification here, Will. Do we anticipate that later in the agenda, in the agenda, the issue of the military recruitment policy will arise?
Yes, under new business, Commissioner will bring it up.
Thank you.
We'll move on with board reports, and we will begin with our student representative, Mr. Los.
Good evening. Let me first say that I'm sorry. My apologies go out to me not being able to attend Tuesday's celebration, and tonight I was at the U of R getting my study on. And tonight, when I go home, I need to finish my paper on Malcolm X. So, before I go any further, I just want to take a moment and recognize the fact that this is Black History Month, and I have learned something new doing this paper on Malcolm X. And there are several individuals that make me smile, and every month, I think we can give grace to everybody and every race, because everybody has something to bring to the table. With that said, I have several role models in this country, in the state, here in this district. And I told these two women that I would not be long with my speech to them, but these two women have been really great to me. One I've been close with for about five years, and the other one I have recently known for a couple of years. I've worked with her on... I've worked with her in several projects, and these two women just go above and beyond in their jobs. They are very dedicated to their role of children in the Rochester City School District, and they do their job very phenomenal, and they're very patient with me and understanding and always there. These two women I'd like to recognize are Michelle Hancock and Marilyn Patterson-Gerit. Thank you. My second family. The next announcement I'd like to make is June 5th, please mark your calendars, Wilson-Magnette High School's National Honor Society will be hosting the 5K run-and-walk for nonviolence. Signups are soon. The money that is raised will go to the Center for Youth for a nonviolence training for youth at risk. I highly encourage you to sign up. I know I will be there, because this is to support nonviolence as what we try to diminish in our city. The next announcement is the Prism Leadership Competition will be tomorrow at RIT, starting at 5:15. Many of our city school students are involved, and this is great because it gives our students a name and a face. We are able to pick a minority or a woman who has contributed to math and science of their generation, so I welcome you to that. Moving on, SLC was very successful this month, and last month, we went on our first projects. Last month, February 11th, SLC attended Blessed Sacrament supper program where I volunteer once a month. We were able to serve many different kinds of people, food, and from washing dishes to serving the meals and cleaning up. The students enjoyed that, and we are looking forward to going back. Yesterday, we joined a bunch of kids, newborns to eight and nine-year-olds, at Wilson Commencement Park for some reading and activities and games. Look forward to pictures being on the district website. Our next meeting is March 18th, and I welcome you, and we are trying to do a service project before then. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Los. Vice... I'm going to start with Commissioner Brennan and the board governance.
There is no report except that Commissioner Evans and I spent a... had a very nice afternoon Saturday over coffee, and it was a wonderful conversation, but it was in anticipation evaluating the evaluation forms, which are under the purview of the governance committee. So, if those of you who have forgotten could turn them in to Commissioner Evans as soon as possible, I'm sure he would appreciate it, and we would move forward with that business. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I have a stack here if commissioners want to add to that. Commissioner Campos and the CIGR committee?
The CIGR committee, we met on Tuesday, February 24th, and we discussed the proposed 2009 legislative agenda. We were able to flush a lot out of it. And we will be meeting on March 19th at 5:00, so that we can approve that, so that we can be able to bring it to the board for the next business meeting. We also were able to receive an update on the facilities modernization program, just to give everyone an idea as to what the timeline is. The program manager selection is due for the summer. Draft projects, the goal is to be identified by late fall. The public input process is slated to start January 2010, and finally, being able to dig the hole in the ground will be 2011, so that everyone knows what the timeline is. And also, I just wanted to also say that I was able to attend the groundbreaking for the Edison Careers in Construction, and it was absolutely phenomenal. The students are so excited, and on top of that, they're going to actually start building the foundation of the house in an airplane hangar. Is that what it is? At Edison. And so, and then, they're going to actually take it to one of the properties in the city. So, they're going to be building a house. So, and the students are just absolutely elated and excited. So, it was a great, great event. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, and I'm happy to hear that the first nail will be... will happen in 2011. That's the end of my second term, and I remember... I remember legislation going in in like 2004, so it's... it's... that would be bittersweet to see that, to see our schools being modernized. Commissioner Elliott and the policy committee?
The policy committee, I don't think I reported the January meeting, and I think because it was after the board meeting. But the policy committee met in January to discuss a number of things, and one being the military policy. In that group, it was voted down, of which I've recommended that it come to the committee of the whole for further discussion. And so, the committee of the whole met this month, a discussion around the military policy. And we will have further conversation under the business in regards to that.
Thank you. Vice President White and the Excellence and Student Achievement Committee?
There you go. Good evening, Mr. President. The Excellence and Student Achievement Committee met on Thursday, February 12th at 5:30 to discuss the proposal to phase out school number 14 and the proposal for what is now being called, at this time, the new school. The committee reviewed Resolution 637, which is the phase out of number 14 school, and Resolution 638, which will establish the new school. The Excellence and Student Achievement Committee requested additional information on the transition process, so the rights and privileges of parents at number 14 could be adequately taken into account. My understanding is this information was provided to the board in its last board packet. The committee recommends the... that the full board approve Resolution 637 and 638. Next month's Excellence and Student Achievement Committee meeting will take place on Thursday, March 12th, at 5:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President White. Commissioner Powell and the finance committee?
Could I ask for clarification on that last? Is this the 637 and 638 are then adds to our resolution packet? Is that correct? I'm looking at the memo, February 29th, explanations of adds and changes to the resolutions. Is that...
I see 637 as approval to phase out 14, and 638 is submission of documents required to register new school. Those weren't in the original packet?
Well, I'm just asking, because we have this memo from February 20th. I just need to put this in perspective.
I believe there were. 637, 638, it was the memo from February 20th. I believe those were already in the packet. It says there were additions, but the memo says there were additions. There were no additions.
So, the memo is incorrect?
Yes.
Okay. That's... I couldn't make sense of what you just said in light of what's on the memo. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. And the finance report?
Okay. Finance report, yes. Finance committee met Thursday, February 19. We reviewed the financial reports and the student activity reports. We recommend approval of both. The finance reports are also in... include budget amendments, which are resolutions 620 and 630. We can vote on those in the regular course of events, but I would like to submit a motion for the board to accept the financial reports.
There's a motion on the table by Commissioner Powell to accept the finance committee annual financial reports. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President White. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the financial report dated February 11th, 2009, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you, Commissioner Powell.
And also, would advance a motion to approve the Student Activity Funds Report?
Motion made by Commissioner Powell to accept the Student Activities Funds Report for the second quarter. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Elliott. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you, Commissioner Powell.
Okay. The remainder of my report refers to the resolutions that came before the finance committee. Finance committee did approve all the resolutions that were presented to us, approved them forward. I beg your pardon, that's not correct. The committee voted to advance with its recommendation Resolutions 620, 626, and 626 through 630. Resolutions 621 through 625 are all educational facilities resolutions. If I'm not mistaken, these are all new contracts as opposed to final payments. Can someone confirm that for me? And...
This year's budget?
This year's award of the CIP. In other words, essentially, last year's CIP, when we approved with the budget, the schools that were on that list, the bids were put out for those construction projects, in part because the finance committee was... only had a quorum, did not have all three of its members. The vote was split, one yes and one no, so these are being forwarded without recommendation. But they are consistent with our capital improvement plan as voted on last year. The next finance committee meeting will be March 7th... March 19th at 5:30 PM, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. And Commissioner Powell, can you just touch on the busy season that's getting ready to come up a little bit, a little bit about budget cycle?
Yes, you'll find on the dais in front of you a two-page memo that outlines all of the important dates that you need to be cognizant of. The first that we're going to see of this year's budget will be on Monday, March 30th, a special meeting where Superintendent Bizard will present the budget to us.
If you're ready.
I'm sorry?
No.
I thought I said something wrong. I'm sorry. After which, we have two public hearing dates, one of which will be both the Contract for Excellence and a regular public hearing on the budget, and a series of three deliberations with their respective dates for submission of questions and due dates for the administration to respond to those. So, all of those dates are detailed in the memorandum. You might want to post that in a conspicuous place next to your telephone or something. This is a different budget... This is a different budget in that this is the first, actually, I'll let Superintendent speak to this.
Sure. I was going to.
You look eager.
Absolutely. It should prove to be an exciting few months. We're about to roll out, begin to roll out the, a financial redesign for the system. Last year, we talked about tracing every dollar and beginning to push a school-based budgeting model. So this is the first iteration of a multi-year process and begin to devolve the power back to the schools. So the folks closest to the kids are the ones who are spending the money and spending the way they see fit, as long as they follow rules and regulation. So it'll be a more transparent budget system. You see what schools have control of and what exists in each school in the district. And one really that will begin to provide a kind of empowerment that school-based people need to have. So it should prove to be an exciting few months for us.
Thank you.
And I want to thank really John Scannell and Josh Martelli who are here, who have been sort of pushing this work forward.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'll just remind my colleagues with the budget, the time to give your input is not after the sausage has already been made, but while the sausage is being made. So these deliberations are very important, and I would, colleagues have budget alternatives, things they don't want to see in there, things they want to see in there. The time to do that is during these next two months. So, thank you. Commissioner Williams and the Audit Committee.
Yes, Mr. President. The Audit Committee was scheduled to meet on Tuesday, February 3rd. However, due to a lack of a quorum and attendance of the members, I was forced to cancel the meeting. The Audit Committee of the Whole did meet on February 10th at the request of the Office of the State Controller, where we reviewed their preliminary findings of their audit report. To date, their report has, their report has not been issued. And that's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. I have a very, just, I'm just going to say, have a very brief report because the hour is getting late. As you know, I am with NISBA's, one of the representatives to the Federal Relations Network. And we had our annual conference in Legislative Day in DC three weeks ago. And of course, you know what the topic was. Stimulus, 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 stimulus. I don't need to tell anyone. You need only turn on the news to see that the economy is going through some challenging times, or as I call it, a correction. And the stimulus was one of the big topics. I know there has been a lot of talk about folks saying that the stimulus is terrible, but the price of doing nothing, I think, will be catastrophic, particularly in the area of education, folks. I would urge all of you to read the stimulus provisions. If you skip, if you don't read anything else, read the provisions for education. The President made, the President has made clear that he is attaching accountability to these, to these things, and a lot of the money will flow via the state and then to be distributed to the district. So it is good that something is being done in terms of making sure that we put forth something to fill the gaps we're being, that have been cut because of the financial situation, particularly in New York, where we rely so much on Wall Street. Malcolm Smith, the Speaker, I mean, the Majority Leader in the State Senate is organizing a public meeting in Rochester. I believe it's on March 26th, and it's going to be on the stimulus. So folks should come and learn more about this. Stimulus is online. It's about 1,000 pages. It took me about an hour to read it, so it shouldn't take you that long. Last topic, number two. This will interest a lot of you that are in the audience. Large discussion around No Child Left Behind. Large discussion on No Child Left Behind. Not sure if it's going to be changed this year, but there is an appetite in this new Congress, who, many of whom didn't have a chance to have input because they were out of power in terms of changing some of the provisions of No Child Left Behind. So there was a lengthy discussion about changes to No Child Left Behind, fully funding it, dealing with some of the mandates. So the chance, the hour is now to speak to our representatives in Washington about changing provisions of No Child Left Behind that we do not like. Before I conclude, again, I just want to thank the Board staff, District staff, for their great work during Black History Month. The Black History Musical at Soda on February 5th was absolutely amazing. Same thing with the Taste of Soul at East High School on the 11th. The Oratorical Review here on Tuesday, you had a kindergartner standing up here reciting Frederick Douglass verbatim. I mean, it was, I felt like Doogie Howser had, had, had come back to life. It was unbelievable. The kid didn't miss a beat, and he was in kindergarten. He was reciting Frederick Douglass. It was like Frederick Douglass had appeared in his little pint-sized body. It was amazing. And then lastly, you saw the event here on the 26th. And we will continue to do this every year for the Board of Education, recognizing the accomplishments of African-Americans. And I'll take any questions that folks may have on my report.
I do have an alibi.
Yes, alibi, Commissioner Powell.
As Representative Big Five, I was in Albany lobbying with the Big Five on February 2nd and 3rd. At that point in time, the administration had been forced to cancel a visit to Albany that was to precede the Big Fives. And I'm curious to find out whether that has been rescheduled and whether our people have, whether our administration people have been to Albany.
Well, we're doing two things, actually. Next week, is it, John? Thursday. We're heading back to Albany to meet with the Governor's Budget folks, as well as some members of the delegation. Tomorrow, we also have a series of meetings with some members of the delegation to talk about the budget, et cetera. So we have two meetings, a series tomorrow, as well as us traveling to Albany all day Thursday to meet with the Governor's Budget folks.
The, the long and the short of our lobby trip on February 2nd was that it was dire circumstances, but this was before the passage of the stimulus package. We don't know, or at least we certainly didn't know at that time what the outcomes would be. And I'm very much looking forward to the Superintendent's budget on March 30th to close all the, or to answer all those unanswered questions.
Thank you. Thank you. We will now move to the considerations of resolutions. But before we move to the considerations of resolutions, may I have a motion from one of my colleagues to extend the time passed, 8:30? Moved by Commissioner Elliott. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Brennan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And to our student rep, it is getting late, I know, and you are a student, so if you do feel as though you need to take leave to hit the books, please feel free. We will begin with Human Resources Resolutions, Resolutions 582 through 619. These are personnel resolutions, so any questions for these resolutions will have to be general or else we will have to go into executive session. The administration also provided, in the Friday Packet, explanations of every single Human Resources resolutions under retirements, resignations, and terminations, leaves of absences, and hires. So there's our, if you have not had a chance to look at those explanations, I have a copy here if anyone needs it. And I want to thank the administration for providing those. It makes for some great night reading. So I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 582 through 619. And when I do these, I'm going to go through a voice vote, roll call vote, excuse me, so that way I can make sure the clerk is able to capture the yeses and nos. So I entertain a motion to approve Resolution 582 through 619.
Some of.
Moved by Commissioner Powell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Brennan. And we'll start with Commissioner, actually, I started that way. This time, I'll go back this way. We'll go, start with Commissioner Williams.
Mr. President, I have a couple of questions.
Okay. Go ahead.
The first one is Resolution 603. And specifically, it has to do with the grant for the, for the AP programs. It's not so much a personnel question, more of a, sort of a general question itself. 603.
Federal grant to increase.
Extended day and credit recovery. On page 18, correct?
What says, a federal grant to increase access to advanced placement courses for students in 14?
The one for?
Yes, but there's right in the middle.
Yeah, in the middle.
This one is the day, the second is the, for the AP program.
Yes.
What's, first question, what's the plan here? And sort of what's the outcome in terms of?
Sure. This was part of, I believe, nearly $3 million grant. Is Bob, Bob Hasler here? Nearly $3 million from the feds as an advanced placement initiative to increase the number of advanced placement courses in the district, PSAT, pre-AP, et cetera. My letter last Friday, I believe, had a page outlining the major, the silly pieces of the grant. Do you want to add some things, Bob, quickly?
Last year, the district applied for and was approved for this grant to increase advanced placement enrollment and courses in 14 of our pervasive need high schools. So that's all of the schools except for School of the Arts, Wilson, and East, which were viewed as already having fairly extensive advanced placement programming. However, those three schools will benefit from the grant by including Mandarin Chinese as a course in those buildings. So over the next three years, the goal is to, excuse me, increase our offerings in each one of those 14 high schools. And what the proposal was before you tonight was that the grant allows for three teachers to serve as .5 zone coordinators to assist with the work of the, of the zone schools, but also to each one of them to hold expertise in the content areas of math, science, and ELA. And for this year, those teachers chose not to leave their students, but to ask if we could do something through additional pay instead of release time. Because we started the grant, we weren't approved for it until after October, and their schedules and teaching loads were already set.
Just out of that, Commissioner, the AP IP grant is very competitive. As one who applied for twice when I was in New York City, it is not one that's easy to get. Clear metrics and clear outcomes are outlined in the grant. If you'd like a copy, I can forward that to you. It's pretty extensive.
Okay. And then just the other thing, what about, what about other programs like IB or the other enhancement programs? Is there anything scheduled to?
No, there is, the feds don't give dollars to expand IB. That's something if we want to do internally as a district, we can do. It is part of our long-term goal of looking at moving IB nationally from Wilson to all the schools in the district. The AP piece is one that the feds will support right now, but they don't provide funds for IB programs, unfortunately.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
Just one other, and this has to do with Resolution 611. And on page 26, just the second person from the bottom, looking at that hourly rate, it looks out of sync with all the others. Does that, just want to?
Yeah.
See if that's, check that to see if that's correct.
Michelle, it's page 26, second from the bottom. It seems to be, I agree, it seems to be much higher than the other. Is that because of, mostly at either the nine or the teens, this one's at 2289.
22?
Yeah.
That would be based on potentially years of experience if they come with, they get so much credit or time based on their years of experience.
Okay. When I looked at it, it just seems to be one of the outliers. I mean, in terms of?
And it also could be the assignment as well, if that teacher assistant is assigned to a particular type of classroom, children with special needs.
Okay.
So teachers are believed by contract for over, for extra pay, it tends to be pretty standard. But teacher assistants are hourly employees, so that changes from person to person.
Can that be verified?
We'll double-check.
Yeah, we can double-check. That's not a problem.
Okay.
Commissioner Powell, any questions on, okay? Vice President White, any questions on Human Resources?
No.
Commissioner Elliott, any questions on Human Resources Resolutions?
Am I supposed to vote? Are we voting?
No, I was just asking your question. I'm going to call the vote in a second.
No, thanks.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Brennan?
I'm fine.
Okay. I'll do a roll call vote, starting with Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Powell?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice President White?
Yes.
Commissioner Elliott?
I have no's.
Okay.
584, 589, 590, 592, 594, and 596 through 614.
Madam Clerk, have you captured those?
Through 614. Thank you.
Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Commissioner Brennan?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. We will now move on to Resolutions 620 through 630, Educational Facilities. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 620 through 630.
Some of.
Moved by Vice President White. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Powell. Discussion, and again, I'll do it the same way I did it in the last way. I'll start with Commissioner Williams. Questions on 620 through 630?
Yes. Quite a few, as a matter of fact. Starting on Resolution 621. And?
Mr. Fenton?
What, the question here relates to a report that I just read that was put out by the Auditor General, and it talks about what's going on with the, with the SIP, between the SIP and what's actually being bidded out. I just went back and started to check and see whether or not some of the points that she made were indeed happening. And when I start at 621, there seems, well, overall, it seems as if when the SIP was, was approved, it was approved not only for a specific amount, but we had specific renovations to be done. But when I look at what's bid here, both in terms of the amount and the actual items, I can't make a one-to-one map in terms of what was in the SIP and what's actually occurring in.
The scope of work should be identical to what was in the CIP for this.
In the SIP, for example, in this case, the amounts are, let's look at school number The amounts are correct in terms of 422, but in the SIP, we had $30,000 to provide air conditioning, $100,000 for an emergency generator replacement.
Right.
And then another $200,000 for ceiling fans, remodel of the teachers' lounge and staff room, and the staff restroom, new PA system, and then a, another $30,000 item to replace the Cyclo Rama.
Right.
But I don't, I mean, I can't map, map that here on, on this.
The bid sheet should show, by Wick's Law, we have to bid the prime contract separately. But the scope of work that was bid is for that scope of work that you just described.
Okay, but, okay, let's, let's go through, because on one, we have, say, the HVAC work, which is Danford, coming up at $57,000.
Right.
Now, where is that in the SIP?
Well, that could be, and I'm not entirely sure this is it, the computer room, equipment room, and HVAC work on the classrooms, because we have to bid them separately by trades, not by scope of work.
Okay.
So take the ceiling fans, for instance, and the remodeling of the teachers' rooms. Those projects may have multiple disciplines involved. So we have to bid the projects by discipline, by HVAC, by plumbing, by electrical. So the scope is packaged together by separate trades, not by the $30,000, $100,000, $200,000. Those are, that's the project.
How do you map it? I mean, if I wanted to go and I said, well, who's doing the, say, the emergency generator? Or, okay, let's, probably even more, just let's go to school number five, okay? Now, on school five, well, to start off with, there's, the SIP that you have listed in the, in the bid is $1,007,000. In the SIP, it's $1,037,000. So there's $3,000 that's unaccounted for somewhere. But that's, I mean, it's minor. It's a lot to get a... It's a like to get a resolution.
Is this school five, excuse me?
Pardon?
Is this school five?
Yes. School five.
I have 1.4 on the CIP.
1.4 in the CIP in school five?
Yes, the total budget. 1.4, $1,490.
No. When you...
At school number five, I beg your pardon, if you look at the wording of the resolution, it's what was budgeted for this year, in this year's CIP was $1,000, I'm sorry.
Yeah, maybe right.
$1,700,000. But we also had $653,000 in carryover projects that weren't done when they've, from last year.
Before you, before you get there, that $1,007,000, in the SIP, it's $1,037,000. Okay? But again, it's $30,000, but that's minor in comparison to everything else. So you have $1,000,000, $1,037,000, and then you have $653,000 that's being carried over from the prior year's SIP, which was for, I think, the windows replacement. Now, when I look at the window replacement, the SIP in 2007, that number was a million, about a million three or a million four. So again, I mean, it's tough to map. And not only that, but, you know, it's going to be a lot of money floating around. People are transferring monies into and out of the contingency, whatever the contingency is. I can't get a handle in terms of...
I'm sorry, it's not the contingency?
No, not here, but on some, on all the others. They're transferring monies into and out of this contingency. And there doesn't seem to be any transparency, no accountability, and no board oversight. And I don't know who controls this contingency or the amount of the contingency. All I know is...
The contingency is in every resolution what it is per project, and it's on the cover sheet here.
Well, no.
And then, and then what we've done, because it's a five-year capital plan that we bid and execute over several years. At any given project, we may be over or under in contingency, but at the end of the year, we balance the contingency 10%. And that's, that is all visible. I mean, we show you the documentation, and we bring the resolutions to you.
No, no, let's, okay, let's go back to the number four, okay?
Okay.
You started with 422, which was the amount of the SIP. The bids that came in were 388.
Right.
Quite a bit different. So I take it there, there must have been a change in scope somewhere.
Well, point of clarification, the 422 is the project budget.
Right.
Which considers that there'll be a 10% contingency and 20% soft costs.
Okay, but then I got another problem. Because even after that's bid, when it came in at 388, then you added another 10% contingency and another 20% soft cost to bring it up to 513.
Well, that's right. The bid came in at 388, and we added 10% to, and then the 20%. The budget of 422 anticipated that we would get bids below 422, add 10% for contingency, because that's the amount that we're holding in reserve, we're not sure. This is, these are construction projects on buildings that are 62 years old. And then the 20% is the soft cost for design fees and that kind of thing.
But the design fees are already known. By the time these bids are left, we have a number for both your design and construct, your design and your contract, design and architectural fees, right? So why do we have another 20%?
Because you can charge back to the Department of Ed 20% of the total cost, not what you spent managing that project, but 20% of the final dollar. Mr. President, with your permission, I want to interject and say that the Finance Committee, as of last, this past month, because we are in the season of adopting these construction projects, I have asked that copies of the CIP be brought to every single finance committee until we're through this season, and we can have these questions at the Finance Committee meeting. They're open to any member of the Board, and that invitation is a standing invitation, but it's especially important when we consider how much this line of questioning is taking up.
Well, first of all, CIPs are already available to all Board members.
What I'm saying is that when the resolutions are coming before the Board in the Finance Committee, what I'm saying is that I'm making sure that the CIP is readily available to make these comparisons, just as you are, and to ask these questions in the Finance Committee, just as you are now. Last week was the time to do this.
No.
I'm sorry, go, okay, just finish with your, finish with your...
So let's go through this again, Mr. Fenton. Started at 422, which you said included a 20% or 30% contingency or mark up, 10% contingency, 20% for soft costs, correct?
10% contingency plus 20%, 10 and 20.
Okay, so that number is already...
That was the plan. That's what we budgeted. But the 388 is what really came in when we put it out to bid.
Okay, and then you added another, you added the...
It's not another, the 422 is the plan. That's the budget.
Right.
388 is what actually came in. Then we have to add 10%, because we're going to hold that as contingency, and 20% for soft costs.
Okay, so which brings it up to 513.
Right.
Okay, and now...
So this one's over, contingency.
Yeah, so you're over. So then you, you transferred in another $91,000 from somewhere, from some contingency.
From the overall CIP contingency.
Right, okay, right, and that's...
An aggregate.
Yeah.
This is one individual project of multiple projects.
So that's the first issue I have. In terms of this overall CIP contingency, how much is that? What's the balance there?
Well, and this particular, just to put it in context, what you're seeing tonight represents about a third of the CIP for this year. So you're seeing about a third of the projects that are being bid right now.
I understand. My question is...
And in aggregate, the entire packet that we have tonight is $31,000 below contingency. Now, we may come back to you with the next package and be $100,000 over contingency.
That, yeah, my question is, though, for this contingency that's out there somewhere that someone has control over, what's the balance right now?
The contingency is what we budget and hold in reserve for things that we can't plan for. For instance...
But where, okay, let me put this another way. Where does this $91,000 come from? Because it's 91 here...
It's budgeted. It's a part of the total CIP for the bond and cash capital. We'll take 10% of that in any given year. So if we had $1,000,000, we would hold $100,000 in reserve for contingency, things that we can't plan for, but that come up through construction.
Plus the 20%, plus another 20%?
Well, the 20% is the 20% soft costs that apply to any job. And again, that's by state education, that department rules.
Okay, so with this contingency, whatever it is, I still haven't got an answer yet in terms of what the balance is, who controls that? How is the money transferred either into or out of it? And who has oversight? I mean, certainly not the Board.
It's a part of the capital plan. So you control it in the sense that if you don't approve this resolution tonight, we won't do these projects as a sum, and we won't allocate $91,000 from overall contingency to this project.
So if the Board says we aren't going to transfer this contingency in, then what?
Well, if you vote no on this resolution, and the contingency's not transferred in, then these projects won't be executed.
Okay. Okay. But I still can't, let's go back to my original point, in terms of mapping what was in the CIP and what's in, what's being bid, there's no correlation. And it seems as if what happens is that you come before the Board and say, look, we need $10 million, and out of that $10 million, we will do A, B, C, and D. And that's what the Board approves. And that's what the Board, I would assume, expects that you will do. What seems like is happening in reality is, once you get the money, then someone else decides, instead of doing A, B, C, and D, we'll do X, Y, and Z, without ever coming back to the Board to say, there's been a change in scope, and this is what we want to do. And that's, that's the problem that I'm having. And that's one of the issues that was raised in the Auditor General's report. That, you know, once the change in scope occurs, somebody makes a change in scope, and it's evident when you go through these next four resolutions, but that happens.
Well, let's understand the process. The CIP, in its normal construction process, we look at a building, we identify what needs to be done. We go through the steps of conceptual design, schematic design, and the level of detail and the accuracy improves over time, is you get to more detail about what it is that you're actually doing. Right up, and this is one step in the process, where now we've received bids, we've planned, we've budgeted, we've made an estimate of what we think it would cost, in this case, $422,000. Now, we've gone out to market with the same scope of work, and the actual bid came in at 388. So on this particular project, we'll go over in contingency, but there are others will be under contingency. And in aggregate, for the CIP, for the year, we will be right at the 10% contingency. We won't be over, we won't be under. And that's been best practice for years.
Well, now, the contingency is one issue. The issue that I have, okay, is that there's been a substantial change in scope for the projects that are being done compared to what was in the SIP.
I disagree. I don't think that's...
Well, let's, well, let's map it. Help me map it. Help me map either for school five, for school six, East High School, it's probably a little more complicated, or school 28.
As identified earlier, if you look at the scope of work in the CIP, we don't bid it by the scope of work. We build, we bid it by Wick's Law, by specific trades. We have to break them out into separate trades.
I understand.
So the HVAC contractor may be providing bids for work that involves multiple scope items, but it's all the HVAC work, or it might not even be all of it, it might be a proportion of it. And then same thing with electrical and plumbing. But if you, if you look at the scope of work, what's being done, in this case, school four, the scope of work is, as the CIP indicates, and what has been bid, is work to do the computer room air conditioning equipment, the generator, the ceiling fans, and a curtain for the gym and auditorium.
Which, which school is that? School?
School four.
Okay, let's, let's go to school five, okay? There's one item in there, number three. Now, we're going to replace the boiler, okay, and all the associated equipment. And that comes up to something in the range of $300,000. And then you, item number three, you say, let's provide, you will provide asbestos abatement in conjunction with the boiler replacement, $250,000, right?
I'm not tracking, are you?
Well, I'm looking at the SIP, the 2008. And the item here, it says, provide asbestos abatement in conjunction with the boiler replacement, $250,000, okay? Now, when you, when I look at the scope of work that's being bid, I see asbestos abatement comes up to $27,000. Big difference. I mean, I could see you being off maybe 5%, 10%, but here, you're almost 80% and 90% off.
One of the things that you have to understand about our buildings is they're 62 years old.
I understand.
One of the challenges, though, in terms of estimates versus actual, is the drawings aren't very good. So frequently, when you get in to really bid the project or to do the work, you find conditions that you couldn't estimate. Because we don't have, like in some of our newer schools, you can look at a CAD drawing and get very specific information about what's there. But it's not necessarily true.
Right, and I could...
So it's not unusual for a bid to come in differently than what we budgeted, which is part of the reason why we hold the contingency.
But not that big. If you're telling me the scope of work is 250, and it comes in at 27...